Again. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, well, the meeting of the Commission for Wednesday, August seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, please come to order. This meeting, A B's meeting will be a hybrid planning and zoning meeting hosted in person at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, thirty-two Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Menonka Tuck Room, second floor, as well as virtually by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you'll be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others when and if you choose to. In order to return, to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman, during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you are muted and or your cameras not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. The three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to the government Le Mans or executive order. For during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others president, present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meetings calendar page of the website. On W W W got Guilford C T dot gov, also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five comments of town agencies we read for each application, if there are any, there will be terrifying questions from the commissioners. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, is it necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address? Seven, after all clarifying questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition, the application will be asked to come forward and make a statement. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commission. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court of Desire. Ten decisions, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at two zero three four five three eight zero nine three nine or by emailing planning.zoning at C I dot Guilford dot C T dot U S after nine A M. Eleven, all applications taken, all actions taken, applications tonight by the commission will be right roll call. All commercials, commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening at the following members, so please identify themselves, commissioners, Kevin Clark.
Here.
Bill Freeman.
Hello.
Ted Sands.
Here.
Philip Johnson.
Here.
Frank DeAndrea.
Here.
I am Scott Edmunds and our office tonight, Jason Marchy. Since we are missing a commissioner, then you will be seated. Staff present tonight are Jay Stein, Town Planner. I don't think Steve's here. Lisa P M B N A, Planning and Zoning Administrative Assistant. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary would normally read the legal notes, or there was not one for this evening's meeting, so we will go straight into our agenda.
Motion to continue the application for Jake's Cherry Street LLC to September seventh.
Second, second. All in favor, please say.
I.
I. All opposed, the motion carries unanimous. Next item on our agenda is Keith B Bishop, one thirteen fifty-five Boston Post Road, map fifty-two lot seven, zone R five. Zone boundary change from R five to P V two continued from July twentieth, twenty twenty. Mister Bishop, would you like to?
Can we mute whoever that is?
Uh, I think we got it.
I think we got it.
Hi there. Good evening, commission members. Thank you for having us back again for our second public hearing on our zone change request that thirteen fifty-five Boston Post Road for our parcel. We've got some updates for you that we're gonna be presenting and giving you further information to clarify some of the questions that came up before you the last time. And Scott, just to clarify the order and what you want presentations is for us to go first to with those, and then you'll have public comments for and against, and then follow up with questions back for us to answer after that.
Uh, yeah, so it's your presentation, questions from commissioners, questions from the public, and then folks, any of their opposition or for, and then at the very end, you'll have an opportunity again to final comments.
Alrighty, no, thank you very much. As you're aware, then we're a multi-generational family business, and I'm fifth generation, and my daughter Sarah and Carrie, who are on the meeting as well, are the sixth generation. They are the active operators and moving ahead our business into the next century, decades ahead, so to speak. And the concepts and ideas as we continue our agricultural heritage and our vision and mission statement arguably best expressed by the two of them this evening. So I'm gonna turn over to my daughter Sarah and Carrie for them to to speak to you directly. And I'll be available for any questions or things they may turn around my way. So with that, off to Sarah.
You're muted, Sarah. Sorry.
Switch screens in order to unmute. I think I'd learned by now, but all right, here we go. So I'm going to, I'm gonna actually read a letter that from my sister and I, just it'll be able to express kind of after the last public hearing. We understand that there were some concerns and things addressed, so hopefully this, what I'm gonna read is going to allow for questions and comments that we'll be able to answer. So let me switch back here. So we're asking this obviously to, on the record, so as you know, we're requesting a zone change from our residential R five use to commercial use P V two. We understand that this may be difficult, a difficult decision to make without more context, as we heard in the last meeting. We hope that any answers and questions that you're hearing tonight will ease your minds and understand that this is hopefully a logical request that does not set a precedence for other applications that you may receive in the future. In one hundred and fifty years plus that we've been in business and a part of this community, we have had to adapt over our business over the ever-changing economic environment. We've done so with thought and care, keeping our mission and vision in mind and staying true to our agricultural roots. Bishop's Orchard has evolved over the years, starting in eighteen seventy-one as a dairy and ice farm to then growing apples in a small roadside stand and fast forward to now twenty twenty-two as we have over three hundred acres of working farmland, a large farm market, pick your own C S A program, cider and wine making operation, a creamery, and obviously most recently, a lively outdoor space with food and drink at our little red barn. We've been working with a consultant and civil engineer for the past six months in hopes to make a longtime dream of the sixth generation into reality. As the business and economy have evolved over time, we've come to realize that farming has changed over the decades. Gone are the days where we can hold our breath for Mother Nature to grace us with the perfect amount of sun and precipitation to yield an abundance of produce that people will come and harvest themselves in large quantities to take home and can, jam, bake, freeze, et cetera, for their winter supply. Now we see ourselves paying higher labor wages and to maintain and harvest and sell through our farm market, competing against big box chain stores, and not to mention overproducing in some areas. We are not a small farm, but we are not big enough to produce the amounts to make a wholesale, wholesaling a possibility. What we do see is a beautiful piece of farmland that we receive dozens of phone calls and emails a week, wondering if we could do private events, weddings, corporate retreats, farm-to-table dinners, birthday parties, baby showers, the list goes on. We also realize that we are outgrowing our current space where our farm market and manufacturing facilities are. We are limited as to how much more we can add on to the building without sacrificing parking spaces, which we can't afford to do, and restrictions, of course, not limited to zoning setbacks of wetlands behind our building. We're looking to continue our research and development of a business plan for an event venue beautifully located amongst the rolling hills of rows of apple trees that we will continue to harvest. A piece of property that is contiguous with our main, main business, easily accessible off of state highway and roads. And what we see is a need as one that will be beneficial to the town and community members. We foresee the ability to educate children and adults with farm-to-table cooking classes and dinners, hosting farm weddings, and many other events that people seek space for. We see this as an opportunity and benefit to the town and community. We know, we are known for driving people into our beautiful towns seasonally with our current business offerings. And this new space would make Guilford a destination year-round, bringing people in for a weekend trip, not only to visit bishops, but other local businesses, shops, restaurants, town museums, beaches, local hotels, and more. It's a win-win for our local economy. Our limitations on manufacturing of both sweet cider and our wine and hard cider has come to a head. We are fighting for space to keep up with the demand, and we need a bigger facility to make this happen. We are currently renting freezers, for example, we're currently renting freezer storage space in Hampden, Connecticut, because we don't have the space on site. We are currently invest, have invested thousands of dollars into a feasibility study and other research as to what opportunities this land could be suitable for. Spot zoning is not a feasible option. Due to the current zoning regulations, inland wetlands, and other environmental challenges, it does not make sense to break any portion of the land off and only request a small portion to be rezoned. The cost to move forward with additional research and planning for the future without knowing if this land will even be allowed for the use we are pursuing is extremely.
That's one of your, yeah.
Sorry. That we are pursuing is extremely cumbersome, cumbersome in an already vulnerable economy. As a sixth generation, we are committed to continuing to operate a successful business and be a mainstay in Guilford. We are committed to continuing farming and preserving the land we own. In order to sustain our business, we must continue to develop new ideas and business ventures that will fit within our core mission and vision in order for future generations to be part of the success that we have been fortunate enough to continue, continue on from our previous generations. We need the ability to grow and expand. It's our hope that the commission will approve this application so that we can continue to grow, thrive, and be a community staple and partner in this town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you mention, was Carrie gonna say something too, or are you speaking for the both of you?
I, I'm, she's shaking her head to speak for the both of us.
Okay. Great. And commissioners, any questions? Well, look for questions from the public. If you are, have your camera on, then we can see if you wave your hand. Otherwise, if you are muted, please, please, hand to the platform, yes. Alright, I see no questions from public. So.
Is this question time or comment time?
Questions. Yeah.
Okay, I don't, I don't have questions, and thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, the typical, we'll see. So I ask for those to come forward to speak in favor of this application. Sure, Don. Pardon me.
Uh, hello, everyone. I do wanna add my voice.
Sorry, just, sorry to interrupt, just one second, and a reminder to everyone, please state your name and your address for.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, my name is Donald O. Paternie, and I live at sixty-five Marshall Avenue in Guilford.
Thank you.
Uh, and I, and I just wanted to add my, my voice of support here. My family moved to Guilford when my son started kindergarten. And one of the things that we have thoroughly enjoyed, season after season, is is connecting as a family at Bishop's Orchards and various offerings that they have. And now my son is about to enter his second year of university, and we continue to be able to enjoy our time together at Bishop's with their new offerings. He's a regular contender at the Thursday Trivia Nights, which is a wonderful place where he actually goes with his friends. And and we go with our friends, and we compete against one another in the trivia night. And I think that Bishop says, has continued to innovate and offer so many different opportunities for our community to connect and enjoy. And I also think that it's a really rare opportunity to see a family business moving into a sixth generation, born and raised in Guilford, who understands the culture of our town and is really committed to continuing to offer enhancements to what they're offering to our community. And and I feel like giving them the support to be able to innovate in their business in a way that keeps it vibrant and alive for another generation or more would be a real asset to our town in so many ways. You know, employment opportunities for our youth, I think, is another extraordinary opportunity that they offer. And 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 our neighbors continue to to let me know, you know, how how precious they find this resource in our, our community. So I just wanna add my voice of support.
Thank you very much. I saw Brad Eisner. Do you raise your hand?
Yeah, um, my name is Brad Eisner. I live at sixty-six Still Meadow Drive in Guilford. Um, I am current farm manager at Bishop's. I've been there thirty-two years. I've worked for three generations of bishops. Started when Albert and Jean were running the farm at that time. Obviously, I've seen a lot of change. As Sarah mentioned, they started out as cows and cows and ice. They certainly don't do that anymore. When I first got there, Barbara Bishop was upset that Keith brought dairy into the store. That was a few years ago as well. I've talked extensively with Sarah. She has a great vision for where she sees the business going. Farming is always gonna be a part of that business. There's no family that works harder. I mean, when I first came, it was just amazing to me how hard from Jean, Albert, Keith, Jonathan, and now the girls, how hard they, and how much effort that they put into it. That particular piece of land is probably one of the least productive apple orchards that we have. It's a phenomenal place for that. Due to the rocks and the ledge that's there, yet it does have the upper end is a beautiful location. It's so difficult. I mean, nobody is, pretty much everybody that's on this has followed traffic on Route One. This will alleviate a lot of that traffic. It would continue to provide jobs in town. I don't think there's a business in town that's provided more first opportunity for employment than Bishop's has. And again, as Sarah noted, you know, back when I started, people would buy a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty pounds of apples. They'd make pies and sauce and can, and people don't do that anymore. The amount of fruit we started, when I started, we had a hundred and sixty-eight or sixty acres of apples. There's about ninety now. We should probably have less. We have to have an equilibrium because you can't, you cannot compete on a wholesale market with outside sources when you can get everything all year long. I think this is a great venture. I think it'll do very well. I think it'll provide town with significant revenue increase, provide more jobs in town. I guess I could probably keep rambling on, but there's no need to. I really support this. My son now works there. It's been there for several years. If I did not believe that they were gonna stay in farming, I would not be giving this speech, and I would not encourage him to stay there. But I have encouraged him to stay. He likes it. They're great employers, and it's a great opportunity for him to grow. So I'm just gonna stop there. Thank you.
Richard Wallace.
It feels good to be back.
Hey, Dick.
Hey, Jay Phil, how are you? Welcome, everybody. Nice to see you all. I'm in favor of this application for almost, in most of all, the reasons stated by multiple letters of support and the previous two commentators. The track record of the bishop family, their commitment to the community, their integrity to do any project by the book and not cut corners. This project means a little bit of a new look to Route One West, both aesthetically and commercially, to make the change to P V two makes all the sense in the world to me and the contributions to the town. And we have to rec, as the previous person spoke, you have to recognize you have, they would not have survived as a multi-general generational business had they not had the foresight to roll with the flow over the multi-decades they've been in business. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, looks like Bo, and then we'll have Brian. Bo, would you like to go?
My name is William Hune, H U H N. I live at four sixty-five Cleverd Hill Road. And I wanted to add my voice of support for, for, for this application. As others have already said, it's an outstanding business. Any town would be absolutely delighted to have a new business like Bishop's come to their town and, and between the, the beauty of the farm and, and the conservation environmental ethic that exists, the community, community activities that the, the entire family engages in. It's, it's truly just a wonderful part of Guilford. And I think it's, it's appropriate for planning and zoning to take into account the kind of company it is and the, the track record that they have. And so I, I just really support the application. We'll go on and on. Thanks very much.
Thank you. We'll have Brian and then Brendan. His hand is raised.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Brian McGloane, six twenty-two Mulberry Point Road. And some of you may have remembered, I was the Economic Development Coordinator for nine years, but that was two years ago I retired, so I'm fully out of that. So my comments tonight are strictly from being a resident of the town for over forty-two years. And and certainly over that time, I've witnessed bishops evolve and change, and you hear of how they had to grow, evolve, and change with their marketplace. And my opinion, and it's been endorsed by many others, that they've done it with great style and grace, and with the intent of improving their business while benefiting Guilford with additional products, services, and employment opportunities, just to name a few. I did listen in on the first sessions, and I heard there was some concern about this nearly fifty-acre, forty-five, fifty-acre parcel being converted to P V two. And recognize there probably are some allowed uses in P V two that some are less comfortable with. But I think, again, you have to look back at their track record. They already have parcels that are P V two. So if they wanted to be, bring in some of the less desirable things, they, they could have done that. But it didn't fit with their character, their vision, and where they were going. So I mean, I'm, I'm putting faith in them that expanding the P V two to do the kinds of things that they've talked about, and Sarah reiterated tonight. I think, you know, those all make sense. And of course, putting this and getting this zone change puts them in a position to start detailing and defining what they really wanna do. We all acknowledged at the last meeting, there's wetlands, concerns, and aquifer, and the old dump site. So from a practical sense, a, a portion, and I don't know exactly if it's half, a third, or whatever, but a portion of it isn't gonna be developed anyhow. So I, you know, without continuing to reiterate or repeat what others have said, I have faith in what they're going to do, and it's gonna be good for them and us as a town, and I support this zone change. Thank you.
We'll go with Brendan, and then I see Gladwell's Murph.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me be a part of tonight's event. My name is Brendan Bloom. I live at nine three seven Goose Lane here in Guilford. I come out this from a little bit more of the business side of things, having owned a large events catering company and restaurant over in Branford, but originally our business started in Guilford, you know, some almost forty years ago. I was a previous owner of La Cuisine, which was a family business. I've executed large events, you know, for as small as five people. Dee Jacob was one of our guests in the orchard, actually, on a beautiful evening we had a few years ago, up to events as big as five hundred people. So although I'm not, you know, running a catering company at the moment, I still obviously keep my ears to the ground. I'm in contact with tons of different folks, and I just want to be clear about my open and very vocal support for this project. And I'll just, you know, kind of touch on a very few high-level reasons why. Experiential events are really where catering and event planning are moving towards in the future. And I think post-pandemic, we've really seen that come to the forefront of what guests are looking for. They don't want a four-walled boxed-in environment. They want something that is gonna allow themselves and their guests to interact in an open, comfortable, aesthetically beautiful space that evokes a sense of place and presence. And to what, quite honestly, having worked throughout the orchards and with Sarah and Carrie and Keith, there really isn't much of a better location, almost in all of New England. And I have, you know, traveled all over New England and worked all over New England, so I say that, you know, from the, the most experience. Some of the events I've had an opportunity to, to do with the bishops have been extraordinary. Guests, you know, years later, continue to rave about them. And it's the connection back to the land, to be honest with you, when you can not only harvest product from where people are sitting, you know, feet away from them, quarter mile away from them, and serve them that product in the environment that still evokes that sense of place, which in this case is the farm and the orchard. It's really an unbeatable combination, and I do want to make it very clear to the committee that people, when they say they're getting married, the first thing is, where are you gonna get married? Oh, we're getting married in Guilford. Where in Guilford? Oh, at Bishop's. So the name Guilford almost will come first as this potential space gets a life of its own and a reputation. But Guilford as that sense of place, the beautiful green, all the wonderful things that make this town as magnificent as it is, are pieces that can be shared with our guests. It can raise the economic profile of town even further. And to have a destination like this that is so unbelievably unique and incredible and still directly related to the land and to the farm and to the town, I think is a no-brainer. Agro-tainment, as it's sort of being called, is one of the hottest, hottest pieces of event planning. All the resources are saying such, conferences are saying such. And to be very honest with you, we, Bishop's is just sitting on an unbelievable opportunity, and I think with that reason, the town is, is as well. And it just, it's really just a no-brainer, in my opinion, and I want to, you know, again, express my full support for the family and for this project in general. So thank you, folks, so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. We'll go with Glenn Weston Murphy, and then after that will be Dee Jacob.
Thank you, Glenn Weston Murphy, one fifty-five State Street in Guilford downtown. So I reiterate all the things that people have said about family and activities there. My daughter brings her little ones to get pumpkins in the fall from Boston area. But I think the thing that, you know, sort of seals the deal in my mind is having built something in downtown Guilford and in the area, there are enough controls in place to prevent the things that people have been concerned about with this change to P V two. You've got the wetlands, you've got other camp boundaries, you have all sorts of other constraints on the property. So you're not gonna get something five generations, twenty generations from now that isn't going to be in character with the town, with the property. And God willing, it will be the thirtieth generation of bishops in the future. But even if it wasn't, I don't see that as a problem, given all of the other constraints and hoops one has to go through in order to. in order to design and build anything, especially the downtown area of Guilford. So with that, good luck. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, Dee Jacob. Oh, you hit it twice. Could you hit unmute again once more?
There we go. Dee Jacob, sixty-one Cherry Street, Guilford. Uh, my present employment is president of the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce that serves the towns of Guilford, Branford and North Branford. And prior to that, I was an owner of a food establishment that had a heavy catering operation. And so coming from those exposures as well as being a consumer and an attender of events at Bishop's, I'd like to, to share my thoughts. I think that the plans that the Bishop family has is the right thing to do to ensure that Guilford remains an agricultural town. I, as I travel the ninety-five, four square miles of my job, I visit lots of farms, orchards, dairies, et cetera. And they all are either, you know, they're, they're terribly impacted this summer because of drought. They're always impacted by something. And they always are trying to figure out ways how they can reinvent in a way they keep to the nutrition, to the traditions of agriculture, but are still creative enough to ensure that they'll be in the long term. You know, finding ways to convert their products to retail outlets, because the wholesale market from the distributors is just not viable. Um, how to go their business become a destination where the fruits of their efforts really can begin to be showcased and continue a second and third and, um, sale other than the traditional sell it in a rack in a farm store. And there was a study in Deep by Deep in two thousand and fifteen that talked about how valuable our agricultural industry was the state of Connecticut, that it was responsible for three point three to four point oh billion dollars of revenue, not, not even mentioning how they support a number of labor sources and tax base. However, what they noticed was traditional farming is declining. And what is keeping agriculture and farming where it is, is the fact that moving into more specialty areas and creating value-added output, um, that increases revenue. I think one of the difficulties is that PV2 kind of is the only option. And, and when I think about it, it can, you know, raise the lines of very difficult things. But when I think about what, what it takes in agricultural to find a second outlet for your product or even a third, we have to look at that it's a very natural part of the agricultural industry. My grandmother, my great-grandmother, my daughter, all can for, they all put a production facility together and they can so that the, um, their farm, their little garden area provides food throughout the winter months to them. That's so natural to think about expansion of processing. And so as opposed to, you know, sometimes you think about, well, processing is like big, heavy industrial manufacturing. This is so inherent, you know, canning was invented hundreds of years ago. You know, we really, really see that the expansion and the need for an expansion to continue to find another outlet for product raise at Bishop's. Second, um, I think if we think about an event space and, and Brendan did put a fabulous dinner up in, in the orchard and it just is such a natural place. When we think about event space and we think about the history of our country and I go back to what I was taught in school, maybe incorrectly about the first Thanksgiving. The first event space was that Thanksgiving in a field where the fruits of the harvest came together to be enjoyed by the community. And so that's a natural element besides being where things are going. I can tell you that as a catering person and trying to find event space for my clientele, um, and two years ago and beyond, there aren't a lot. In the role that I am right now, we went through a number of places to try to put an event in in November because there just aren't the kinds of spaces that we want, let alone, um, spaces that offer the opportunity both for education that just aren't a catering house. I, I'm so impressed with the idea of having a space, having experienced what it's like without having any kind of space around it, just out in the open. I know it will be fabulous. It will continue to drive tourism to our town. It will continue to ensure that Bishop's is here for the long term. I also wanted to mention that Bishop's requests to, um, user spaces different, differently is really part of the historical model in, in the state of Connecticut. Um, we already can see the impact of Little Red Barn in terms of providing outlets for people of all ages to enjoy. Um, in two thousand and five, there was a study in Connecticut, um, under Yukon that noticed that the average farm is only using eleven percent of their acreage into active farming. The rest of it is in preparation to farm and to convert that farm output into revenue. So it's not like you want to farm, you can't have a farm without having other spaces in terms of that. I know that Bishop's has made decisions over generations like people that are of farming, families that have had to make the decisions that said the farm is the future. Those decisions to cut down an apple tree so that they can then go grow a new one or to put a field in fallow to let it recover and, and have, um, better nutrients for the future, or how you think about pollinating your field. All of those are decisions that have been made by the Bishop family that was for the good of the long term, for the establishment of a continued generations of farmers and to ensure for the well-being of the town of Guilford. I think that they have a proven track record of what they say is their bond. They probably have higher standards than we could ever regulate in terms of taking care of the property that's been the livelihood for so long. And I respectfully ask you to positively vote on their request.
Thank you very much. Um, Richard Wallace, I see your hand is raised, but I want to give everyone else first opportunity first. Uh, is there anyone else who hasn't got an opportunity to speak in favor? Not see anyone. Go ahead, Richard, with your double thing.
I just want to do housekeeping. I'm so used to be participating with you guys without identifying myself. For the record, Richard Wallace, three eighty-six North River Street in Guilford.
Thank you.
We know where you live. Hey Scott.
Yes, sir.
Can you at least once pop up a map for tonight, for anybody who's curious? Um, especially since being a little bit more specific about where they may want the facility to go. So if we could see that on a map, that would be awesome.
Yep. Apologize everyone, I should have been ready for that. All right. So the parcel in question, this is the area here that is, uh, currently PV2. Um, this is a small parcel that is not related, although it is zone PV2 as well. Um, and then the parcel in question, or the remainder of the parcel in question, that's residence, uh, R5 right now goes along Route One, uh, along this boundary. And then, um, around this one individual parcel, that's not part of what we're discussing. And then down Long Hill Road, um, back to the corner.
So where would the area be? So there was, someone had mentioned, Mr. It's not had mentioned, there was an area where the apple trees don't grow so well. And that might be an area that, uh, an, an event facility might go. So where would that area be?
So I'm, so it's Sarah. So I'm just, I can, Scott, if you zoom in a little bit, I'm happy to kind of identify.
Where are we going?
All right. So well, um, okay. So stay there. And if you bring it, bring it down a little bit.
Sure.
Little bit more? Sorry. Okay. So the, the area that we've, we're currently have worked with a consultant as well as some, some, a civil engineer and I'm, he, Mike May, he's had another, uh, P and Z meeting that he had to be on for a different, uh, client somewhere else in another town. So just if Jamie, you can keep an eye out for him. He was hoping to join. Um, but the, where we're looking specifically is for everybody is kind of like to the northwest of that, that dark space right now. Move your arrow to the right. Yep. So right past that, that's kind of the peak of the, of the property. But to the left there, those apple trees right there, it's a very, that, that's down too far. That's inland wetlands. I, so right there, yes, roughly in that, in that area, um, dead center where those apple trees are is where we're looking. It's kind of from the topography studies that we've done, um, that seemed it's, it actually was the most logical um, space for, and as again with the aquifer and in the wetlands, not that we're doing anything. The aquifer really doesn't even kind of play a role, right? So we're not looking to put a crematorium or a laundromat or anything. This is something that we're specifically looking to put up an event building and possibly and for manufacturing as well. Um, so, but that in general space is where we'd be looking to do it.
Okay. Right. So a reminder for everyone, the aquifer that was mentioned was a long, long hill road primarily. Um, and then as you can imagine, the wetlands is about a hundred feet in either direction of the brook, to retake.
Answer any other questions that there are on the map, that one parcel that's, you know, we do own that's on the corner there of, up that top property right there. Uh, it's not the one you're on, sorry, the one next to you. That one, yep, we own that piece of property. But that was not what we're looking to switch.
That's not part of this application.
Correct. Just if there was any questions on it.
Yeah, that, 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 the entire piece we own is lot seven and seven A are both in the, uh, zone change request.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
But there is one single one acre lot that's, uh, in the middle. There's one here. Now, and, um, I have spoken with that landowner and, uh, he respects our right to do what we want with the property and, um, said he wouldn't be, uh, coming forward to make any objections.
Okay. Um, I'm going to switch back just so that I can see everyone.
Thanks for popping that up, Scott. Appreciate it.
No problem. Um, anyone else that we haven't heard from that would want to speak? Yes, Philip, you have a question.
Um, Jamie, have you explained, um, to Keith and the family, the, um, revised process when the new zoning code comes through with respect to tying applications to changes?
Uh, thanks, Bill. Uh, yeah, this is Jamie Stein, town planner. Uh, we have had brief discussions about it. Uh, conceptually, as it exists now, uh, there is a new kind of business district in our draft zoning regulations. It's called a planned development district. Uh, it's a commonly done thing in Madison as well as in New Haven, where an applicant can bring forward a master plan, uh, that has a, uh, zoning change, but also coupled with a site plan. So, um, this, uh, was drafted, geez, one and a half, two years ago now, probably by Glenn Cholter. And it was, uh, meant to help the commission and applicants, uh, with this, uh, what currently now exists, which is a two-step process of, uh, requesting the zone change and then coming forward with the same.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Not seeing any other, um, folks on the line. We also, uh, have received Jamie's nineteen letters in support. Is that the correct number that I'm seeing? Based on flying through.
We received, um, there's fifteen letters. There were another four after four, four thirty PM today.
Oh, this, yeah. So there's fifteen that meant that, and then there was another four that came through to email to me. Um, so we've had a lot of people speaking in support to this point and, um, I certainly want to make sure that it's well documented that there's a lot of support for this item. Um, I think, uh, if you guys don't mind, it makes the most sense to me to just do what we did last time where we go through each one and say who it was and, and, and that they were in support. Um, otherwise we're here for another hour reading letters. So, uh, what do you think is the correct way to go, Sarah?
So, um, I mean, my hope was that they were read into the record. Um, I'm going to let my father, I, I understand, um, the time constraints. I just want to make sure that all the commissioners have had time to review them and understand what, um, the, each letter of support is saying, um, and have any other further discussion before.
So we, we all sent the fifteen. I'm more than happy to read the four that came.
So I'd be, I'd, I'd accept that if, if that's okay, I'm gonna.
And I'll go through the fifteen just to, to demonstrate for the public who it was that wrote them. Um, and, and is that, that work for you?
Fair enough.
So let's, let me share my screen and we'll go through the fifteen first. Um, so this was a letter from Tim Sperry at, uh, twenty-two Broad Street. Um, and then we had a letter from, uh, Peter Palumbo at, uh, let's see. He does not leave an address.
Pete lives on Lover's Lane.
It's, it's in the letter, one twenty Lover's Lane.
Thank you. Thank you very much. One twenty Lover's Lane, but you probably can also meet him in his business place. Um, he.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, these are all letters of support.
Correct. All these are all letters of support. Um, this letter is from Robert Hartman at, uh, well, it looks like that doesn't have an address.
Um, Plains Road or his businesses at, uh, the, um, O'Anos Plaza there where Black Business is.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Um, this is a letter from Larry Call fed, um, Cap. I'd said I butchered that. Um, at, uh, five Maffra Drive. A letter in sport, another letter of support from, uh, Tim Pinchback, president of William Petzreck Incorporated, uh, nine twenty-nine Boston Post Road.
That was Tom Pincheck.
Sorry, Tom. Yep.
And
which is the other major agricultural business that's been in Guilford a long time with, uh, rose growers and the greenhouses that are back off of Route One uh, opposite, um, the old AMP Plaza.
Thank you. Um, this is a letter in support from Greg Goulet at eighty-six Pondview Circle. Um, we had, he came actually on and spoke, but this is a letter that was put in by Don Apodamy, um, from.
Sixty-five Marshall Avenue.
That's right. Thank you very much.
And, and my wife and son, uh, both, uh, are, uh, helped to, to write that letter as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, you also went into the website to also express your support. Appreciate that. There's a letter in support from Richard Fitzpatrick and his wife Elaine at, uh, eighty Lower World Guilford. This is the letter of support from William Lee at one eighty-one Falcon Road in Guilford. Uh, sixty-plus year resident. Um, this is a letter of support from Richard and Janet Sandella at sixty-two Tuttles Point Road in Guilford. A letter again from the Fitzpatrick family says a letter from Julie Fitzpatrick in support. And this is a letter from Mary Jo Kessler and Russell Campaign at one thirty-one Boston Street. Um, this is a letter from Jacqueline, uh, Godioso, um, at sixteen Hickory Road in Guilford. Um, a letter in sport again from the Apodamy family, very supportive, appreciate that. Um, and those were the fifteen. So then let me jump to sharing the other four and, um, I wonder if some of the commissioners can help me with this reading. I'll pop it up on the screen. Um, first one. Share, uh, Mr. Philip Johnson, would you mind reading this one for? Share, uh Mr. Philip Johnson, would you mind reading this one for me?
Uh dear Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We write regarding Bishop's Orchard application for zone change request with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Unfortunately, we are unable to appear at the meeting this evening in person, so. We respectfully request the commission read our letter, it's part of the record. We urge the commission to consider moving Bishop's Orchard's application forward tonight. As you are aware, Bishop's is a proud and law, Bishop's has a proud and long tradition promoting agriculture. In the town of Guilford for a hundred and fifty-one years, they have grown as a farm, a market, a winery, a tourism attraction. For those along the shoreline and state, it goes without saying that their family has a farm, their family farm. Has contributed to the economic development, well-being of the town of Guilford in the past. And promises to contend to to do so in the future. The Bishop family has always been conservationists and careful to conserve the environmental concerns. And daily business decisions, if afforded this opportunity, the special permit for the forty-eight acres. Fifty-two or whatever. Acres of land would be beneficial to the entire town in terms of economic development. As they expand their manufacturing operations and create an event facility. This expansion of services would bring new people into town and contribute to the town's vitality. Additionally, approval of this application as. It would provide for Bishop's Orchard's more flexibility to be environmentally conscientious by allowing them. To be mindful of the aquifer agricultural and land preservation, renewable energy. And continue their tradition of conservation as they have created on the land. Approval of this application would not be a blanket statement of acceptance, but would move this portion. So portion forward so that Bishop's can begin the planning process. As stewards of the land, they have vested interest in keeping the best interests of the community and its environment at heart. It is our understanding that the orchard would still need to go to the commission for several permitting processes along the way. As they are looking to expand their facility and would work with the town to maintain the integrity of their intentions. Uh as a municipality that continues to work to expand the growth of our vibrant agricultural and business community. We appreciate your favorable consideration of Bishop's Orchard's application. If we can be of further assistance, do not hesitate to reach out, Christine Cohen and Sean Scanlon. Sorry, and sorry, Vincent Kendall or a state representative, sorry, I did not mean to slight Vincent Kendall, just.
Thank you. Frank, if you'd be able to help me on the next one.
Yes, sir. This is to the town of Guilford Planning and Zoning dated August seventeenth from David De Mayo at thirteen fifty-three Great Hill Road. Um Bishop's Orchard and Farm Market, request for zone change, dear commission members. Please accept and read into the meeting minutes this letter of support for the requested zone change put forth by the Bishop's Orchard and Farm Market. The six generations of the Bishop family who own and manage the historical icon and successful business are unmatched in the state of Connecticut. Their presence in our town has been nothing short of a quote crown jewel, end quote, asset and something every town resident has benefited from. The Bishop family generations have all proven to be superior stewards of the most treasured resource, the land that they farm. Nurture and care for every day, we as residents benefit by having safely grown and readily available wholesome food, excellent services, abundant resources. And enjoyable entertainment. As business age, there are quote ceilings, end quote, that are hit. And for a business to thrive and grow, those ceilings need to be pushed through with forward thinking and vision. The Bishop family is nearing another quote ceiling, end quote, in their growth and will continue to solid leadership from generation number five. And the vision of generation number six. This next ceiling will be pushed through, the benefit to the town will be outstanding as it has been proven in the past. The addition of the bakery, the winery, the creamery, in the event venue known as the quote Little Red Barn, end quote. Have all brought us joy when visiting the property. The town of Guilford and the Planning and Zoning Commission have a unique and powerful opportunity to become a partner in the continued success and support of the Guilfords. Quote crown jewel, end quote, please keep in mind through six generations, the Bishop's family members have always grounded their business decisions. On their quote core values, end quote, of family, community, trust and integrity. Please consider your vote in favor of this requested zone change, a vote for the future of Guilford, quote an agricultural community, end quote. That must look beyond the narrow definition of the word, quote agricultural, end quote. And embrace the diversity of this industry, respectfully submitted David De Mayo. Thirteen fifty-three Great Hill Road Guilford.
Thank you very much. And Kevin Clark, can you help me with this next one?
To the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission, I am writing this letter in support of Bishop's Orchard's request for a zone change request to rezone forty-six acres. Of the fifty-four acres of land they own, bordered by the south side of I ninety-five Long Hill Road and Boston Post Road, Route One. To the PV two zone, which is Post Road Village District Two. The Bishop family has always been incredibly committed and respectful of our community and their actions have proven that over their hundred and fifty-one. Of years of business in Guilford through the years, they've they've been, they've been the venue for large and small gatherings alike. For nonprofit organizations and community events and for private events, including for me and my family over the years. Not only have I heard no negative issues associated with their operations and or events. The Bishop family and their operational staff go out of their way to ensure that not just the organization or the entity or event has what they need. But are sure that is within the guidelines of the town approvals, they have sought and are respectful of the surrounding neighbors and and community. Allowing a zone change for this unique property allows the Bishop's Orchard family and business to grow in a smart manner. And to continue to reflect the values and services, the needs of those, not just in Guilford, but throughout the region. This zone change for a unique area of Guilford, which has very other little use, will continue to enhance our community through the family's sound judgment. Utilization of professional consultant experience and a planned strategy to help the operation expand and keep up with today's needs. The Bishop's family reputation and dedication to Guilford should be considered in this request. For all those reasons, I support this request for the zone change for Bishop's Orchard in front of you tonight. Sincerely, Michael Ailes, four four six Old Whitfield Street.
Thank you very much. And the last uh item that came through. This is from Eliza Jansen Petra at forty-four Old Cory Road, Guilford, Connecticut. Executive Director of the Guilford and Branford Community Foundations, to whom I concern, I'm writing in support of Bishop Orsard's. Request for a zone change for their property slash Orchard. Not only Bishop's Orchard, a thriving family-run business that employs hundreds of people, including a number of local high school students. Pays six figures in taxes to the town and attracts visitors to their farm market and by association to the town. They're a leading example of giving back to the community. There's not a nonprofit organization in town that they have not supported in some way through scholarship, through rounding, the quote-unquote rounding up. At the cash register through donation of cider and donuts, through their volunteerism of local events on boards and through charitable organizations. As Bishop's grows, their impact on our local community grows as well. It is exciting to consider their proposal, particularly the idea of a new event space and an active farming community. Nonprofit organizations rely on events, dinners, cows, auctions, et cetera, to meet the bottom line. Another venue would be the most welcome addition, while we have a few options between Guilford and Branford. And a case additional location would greatly benefit the efforts of charitable organizations who need to raise funds every year. To support their clients through events and the fact that Guilford has such a rich history of agriculture. The concept of a venue in a farm setting seems specifically exciting. Shout to me with any questions or further information, I look forward to seeing the proposal move forward, most sincerely, Eliza. Okay. Any other. On the line that would like to speak in favor. Um I now give the opportunity for anyone on the line to speak against this application. All right, seeing none. Sarah or Mr. Bishop, any any last things that you like to say uh related to this item?
I would just ask back to, I know last, last, I don't mean to drag this on, but at the last hearing. There was a lot of questions and comments uh from the commissioners themselves. I think it's been very quiet tonight, so I'd like to get an understanding of there's any more questions or comments that you you have for us.
Sure, Jason.
Uh hi Sarah, um I'm I'm wondering about the existing. Trees there that are that produce the apples, uh curious is how long an apple tree can produce apples and. Do you consider you want to keep most of those trees in place and producing, is that part of the plan or?
We we do, that is part of the plan, so is to keep producing on that property.
Um excuse me, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to know that Mr. Michael.
Has joined you there in person?
No, virtually, I'm all alone here.
While he's, while he's loading on, Philip Johnson.
So Sarah, as I I hope Jamie has explained, um with the new zoning code, there's an opportunity to bring forward. An application with a joint proposal for development and uh the zoning code change. Have you guys considered just waiting on the zoning code change as opposed to going for it now?
Our biggest concern right now, and I did talk briefly to Jamie this morning and she did mention it. Um I think the the the, and I'm not sure if you're referring to the, just the rewrite of the regulations on the agricultural side is if, or you act.
No, there's actually, there's actually within the. You know, people can bring forth an application with a specific proposal for what they want to do with the parcel land. And the zoning code change that would allow that at the same time. So right now, we're kind of restricted that if we grant a zoning code change. You're not tied to whatever it is um you might do. So that's kind of, that's, it's a great improvement in terms of process. Um and hopefully it will not be too long in terms of how long it will take us to get that done.
No, I I completely understand where you're coming from, I think from from our standpoint. Um and obviously in hearing the support of, you know, people backing in, you know, the number of people in town. Um there's a lot of work that goes into what more has to be done before we'd be able to come to. The P and D, the commission again with a site plan as well as the the zoning change request, so. We are looking to do it, get the zoning change first so that we know what money and the dollars that we're investing into the consultations. And working on a site plan and architects and lawyers, everything that we're going to need in the future um to not prolong the process.
And I'll just chime in there, Phil, thanks for the question. Yeah, so aware of it, and as you're aware of it, that that's, you know, in proposal stages and the draft timeline indicates uh March of next year. That the whole package may be voted on and it's all proposed, it's got to go through more iterations and public comment process. So can't hang our hats on anything that, you know, is vaporware, so to speak, at the moment. So that's why we're putting this forward here at the moment, so we can in a timely fashion continue to, you know, develop ideas and plans to. To do with the things that we've just expressed to you in more, much more conceptual detail than we did at the first meeting, so. Time isn't on our side, so to speak, for for doing that. You know, the apple tree length of uh service for an apple tree can end be anywhere from uh ten years to to fifty years, depending upon the type of tree. The root stock that's grown on on the soil and where it is. Um so we're, every year we're always constantly replanting um some number of varieties in apple trees. And with the building going in somewhere on this site, there will be apple trees that will be displaced, but some of those would not be. Um you know, replaced or growing again in a in a cycle for other years. And as Brad indicated earlier, um we have other land that we're rotating stuff into and other crops that we're rotating around to. Um in other locations to then grow the right varieties for the future. Uh the different mix between peaches, apples, pears, raspberries, blueberries, strawberries. Um that we have and the limitations of the soil types in the different locations on the farm. So all those are considerations as well as, you know, water supply. That area for mostly driving by the Long Hill Road opposite the fireman's field, that's a a steep rock outcropping, you know, there. So we've got apple trees that they planted um many years ago that really don't deserve uh the energy to be planted back there again. But yet those trees will probably remain um as part of the the distage that goes on that site itself.
Thank you, sorry.
Nope, thanks for pointing that out, Phil.
If that's all, I'd entertain a motion to close public hearing outside.
Comment, Scott?
Yeah, sure, Keith.
Thanks, um a little other historical perspective, we added on our last major addition in two thousand and five to the building. And that was after deliberate uh family planning and the next generation coming along and knowing that we had additional generation coming. And uh one of the sites we looked at splitting the buildings up to make room for what we were doing at that point was this exact site. To then put a farm cold storage production facility um somewhere on this site. That would have been more farm oriented at that point in time, um but we decided against it um time now, obviously we explained that. We're outgrowing what we're doing, so you know, we are looking at that now. And then um uh economic development is not weighed in on here, I did contact them um prior to the first hearing. Um they've been silent, um and I can't speak for them, but Brian McLeod did speak up as a past EDC. Um person and working with a commission on that end of it. And there's a strong economic development component, so um you know, supporting our business operation to utilize what we have to grow that way. And then finally, um I really appreciate the outpour of community support that has come forward in letters and people speaking up. Um tonight and at the previous hearing. And you know, in that regard, um I just in my attending numerous, but not super high number like you folks. The public hearings do you hold, it is very rare to turn around, have this number of people come out to support um any application. And so I just want to have you make sure you take that into consideration as um the next steps going forward. So thank you very much for your consideration.
The only other thing is I know there was mentioned that I don't see him in the room that Mike was on, did he not come in?
Uh it's Jamie, he's popped in and out, I know that he was gonna try to join from his car in the parking lot of the other meeting, but I, I don't think he was able.
So, I mean, since there isn't exactly a proposed building or anything, then I I don't feel like we have questions for him specifically. I don't, doesn't seem like other commissioners would feel that way either.
No, understandable.
Thank you. Um all right, I heard a motion from Mr. Sands and second from Mr. Johnson, thank you. We'll do a real call vote, Kevin Clark.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Ted Sands.
Yes.
Philip Johnson.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Jason Marchy.
Yes.
And although yes, thank you very much for everyone in the public that has been involved in this and uh we will deliberate today, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back up my. All right, uh next time is deliberation of public hearing items, uh this is Keith Bishop, thirteen fifty-five Spose Road. Math fifty-two, lot seven zone, R five zone boundary change from R five to PV two. Before we jump into a motion, I wanted to, I think we should go through, go around the room and um. Kind of take the temperature of where everyone's feeling or thinking, um anybody want to go first?
I'll go first.
Sir, Bill.
It's but it's Bill Freeman, I. I know that we've had this come up before and other um requests for zone changes. And I think sort of echoing what Phil has reiterated is that you kind of open up. Although I I'm sure that in this case, there's there's no. Thoughts of doing something different than what their intention is, but I think it does set a precedent that we've. We've not allowed other people to do the same thing when they have. when they had a singular plan that they placed in front of us because we were allowing a zone change that created sort of an open zone, if you will. And I think given that we have something coming up very soon that would allow for them to bring a very specific idea forward with a specific zone, zone change associated with it, I would prefer personally that we wait until we get to that point. And then the bishops can bring forward their drawings and their plans and the location and all the things that are associated, associated with it. You know, traffic, things like that, and we can look at it on a singular basis. So that's, that's generally where I'm coming from. Thanks.
Ted, I saw you raise your hand.
Right. I, I think that while I understand what Bill has said and, and, and Phil's comments, I, I think that given the nature of the property and the constraints that are involved with this property and the the whole process of being ready to make the application of, of a specific type. I, I can understand why the family wants to do this in two steps. And personally, I, I, I think we should go ahead and we should vote on this and I have a favorable view.
Kevin?
My, my question coming in tonight was basically to address what Bill addressed about why not wait until March? Since we're kind of doing all this, I think everybody pretty much in an agreement that this is a great idea. The bishop's family in turn answered that question again tonight, why they wanted to move now and not wait. I think they know what's coming in March and they know what's best for their business. And if they think to move now is the best route of action, then I gotta think they're, trust their judgment on that. So I mean, I think the project sounds great.
Mr. Philip Johnson?
The project sounds great too, but it's not tied to the zone change. I mean, trust is a great thing and I trust them, but we've had so many applications over the last seven to eight years requesting zone changes. And, and these are fractional zone changes in comparison to this one. I, I have concerns that if we were to approve this, that it really, it, it really reeks of favoritism for the bishop family. And I, I honestly think they would do great stuff, but I think asking them to wait till March for the, to tie a development plan to a zone change is not a huge ask. And for us to grant a fifty-two plus acre zone change to PV two, when we've said no to similar requests on much, much smaller lots, even, even ones that are split, in my mind is problematic. It's, you know, you know, I, I know the bishops are great stewards of the land. I know they've bought back parcels, but I don't believe that we should be doing exceptional favors for individuals. I think we should be treating applications in an equal manner. And that's, so I, I would not be in favor of, of this at this time. If, if in fact it comes before us again next March with a proposal for a development, you know, for a portion of the property, I'd be all for it. But I, I want to see the actual plans, not just the, here's our idea.
Thank you. Frank?
Right, so I kinda was on the fence today. I learned a lot more and from some of the letters, I learned a lot more on, on kind of what a conceptual idea is, because I had no idea. I learned about agro-tainment. I, I learned that we had some caterers talk, so it led me to believe, like I said, that they're looking at some type of catering facility. But once again, it was all speculation. It sounds great. I, I'm leaning towards what, um, what Mr. Johnson just spoke about, because the concept of it sounds great, but it is a large piece for such a drastic change from an R five to the PV two. Once again, I learned a lot over the last few weeks, reading some of the letters that came in. So yeah, like I said, it sounds excellent. It's, um, it's, it's tough. And yes, there is a ton of support. I think that if we let this go again, you can have another five hundred people come out and support. They're loved by the community. I love them. My kids love them. We're, we're there a lot. But once again, you know, we have to look at the twenty-three thousand people that live in Guilford. So at this time, it's tough. Still not sure yet, though.
Uh, Jason?
Oh, well, I have to say I absolutely love bishops. I shop there each week. They're definitely a local institution, greatly respected. And we're, we're seeing overwhelming public support for this zoning change. They obviously provide high-quality service, high-quality products. And, you know, they're not a big corporation. They're a family-run business in town, which I, I think speaks a lot on behalf of their quality. However, I, you know, when I, when I look at the record of similar again, zoning change applications that have been denied, which are of lesser sculptiveness. I, I do feel that, that at this time, it would, it would seem like favoritism towards, towards the bishop family as much as I'd love to, to, to see them continue to prosper and grow in Guilford. So I, I don't want to stonewall them, but if they'll have another chance in March to readdress this again with a plan, I, I would be more comfortable with that.
Thank you. I would agree with a lot of things that everyone has said. I, as Frank has said, I'm staunchly on the fence on this. And I think it proves me to play a little bit of devil's advocate in both directions. So one, one, a couple of points that I want to make towards you, Phil. In principle, I agree with what you're saying and, and as you said, our record has shown that we are not making these types of changes. I would mention as devil's advocate that most of the other applications that I've been a part of have had extensive neighbor opposition to those proposed zoning changes, whereas we have had one letter in this case. The other item, the other related part of that to think about is the constraints of the site where it's literally bordered by PV two on two sides, bordered by ninety-five and bordered by, I think it's three or four, maybe three or four residential homes, right? So this isn't a site that's smack dab in the middle of, of an urban residential space in the middle of downtown Guilford. So I think those are some things to consider in turn. I, I don't think anyone's thinking this in terms of favoritism and I want to put that kind of out the window. I think everyone can agree that we're as a, we're thinking about this in terms of what's best for the town. This is, it's without question that the bishops has been a positive force for this town for, for ages and, and everyone hopes they will continue to be so. So I don't think, I don't think that's what's, that's the referendum here. So for me, I'm really trying to focus on that, trying to focus on, as you say, felt the precedent that's being set. And, and it does this set this, does this, is this application set apart somehow in your mind? Do you have a, do you have any thoughts to that, Phil?
I mean, I guess the only concern I have is, you know, i- i- if this parcel gets converted to the commercial value versus the residential value, I don't think anyone would argue that we're dramatically increasing the value of this parcel.
Right.
So for, for us to make that call when we've denied smaller applications, I think, again, I just, I don't want to put us in the crosshairs of, you know, why do you do this on this application and not on some of the other smaller ones? And I, and I, I do agree with you, there, there's been fifteen letters of support, but we have twenty-four thousand residents in our town, give or take a few thousand. So, you know, fourteen letters and I, I don't, again, I don't, I, I appreciate all their input. It just, it, it gives me concern that we would weigh in saying fourteen letters in twenty-four thousand is a groundswell.
Sure. Mr. Sands, yeah?
Well, uh, look, I, I, I haven't been on the commission long enough to have seen all these ones that got turned down. I've observed some of them. But I, I, I think that the point that was made earlier has a lot of relevance. In many cases where things are turned down or where an application is controversial, it's because the neighbors or, you know, some organization or some group of local people are opposed to the concept of what's going on here. And that's just not the case here. What we have, I mean, this is, this is zone residential. I don't think this is particularly prime residential property, given that you've got the wetlands on it and, you know, that it's bounded by commercial and, and Route ninety-five. This, this isn't prime residential property. This is going to be used in a commercial way eventually. And what we have here is an applicant who wants to expand an existing business, who's proven that they are, you know, reputable, highly reputable and trustworthy people. And they've got a difficult, in my view, they have a difficult task to cite and, uh, you know, bring forth an application, which we're going to eventually have to, to work on for a specific site, given the limitations of this particular property. And so I, I, you know, I, I think that this, if we turn this down, this will definitely set a precedent. And I was on the economic, I was the vice chairman of the economic development.
They can bring this forth with an application, with a proposal for what they actually want to do. Jamie, can, can you read off all the permissive, the permitted uses within the zone? Like, again, I don't think, I don't think any of this is going to happen. And Scott, feel free to overrule me on this because I don't have any problem with it. But I mean, it's, we, we opened the door. I mean, I, yes, I trust the bishops. But, you know, how can we say we're going to do this for them and then not do it for other people as we've done in the past?
So as I said, it's not about who owns the land, right?
Agreed.
We need to try to make sure we don't discuss it that way. This is about this application and that's what I'm trying to say is, well, what makes this application different from the other place? The other, other, the other side of things and the reason why I'm on the fence about this is because, for instance, again, the current owner is somebody obviously that is very trusted in the town. But our, you know, we as a commission, we try to look forward as well. We try to think about, well, if this land changes hands, there's something else or parcels get sold off. Then, you know, as, as you say, there's a whole list of things that could be put on these parcels. Obviously, there's the offer and the other things that restrict those items. But just because you brought it up, Philip, I'll go ahead and put it on the screen for everyone to see.
Hey, this is Bill again. I, I just, I just want the bishops to understand that we're, it's not their, we're for or against their pro, what they're trying to do. It's that I think we need to be consistent as a board, our charge is to be consistent. And I find it difficult to be consistent for others and then inconsistent in this particular situation, given especially that I think past people that have been denied was basically because we couldn't with any sure knowledge know that, that, that what they wanted to do was the only thing that was ever going to happen there. So I think that the new format that we're bringing forward in March is going to allow people to bring a very specific thing forward that is for them and only for them to do on that land, given that change. And that's what I think we should try to focus on and wait for. And, and, and then I think going forward, we'll have no, there'll be no nuances then or differences between any of the applicants. Thank you.
Thanks. Just because Phil asked for it, I threw it up here. The highlighted column J is everything. And I would, if our, I would recommend you focus on everything that's P as in permitted, as opposed to special permit. Because special permit, as we know, will come before us regardless. Permit is, is an item that's just permitted by the zone. So I'll just scroll through slowly as a reminder.
Describe one more thing I'd like to add, if you don't mind?
Sure, go for it.
I know I'd spoken earlier about thinking this is a great idea and being in favor of it. And I actually came into tonight, she was, was no second thoughts about voting in approval of this. But as I sit here and listen to some of my fellow commission members, I, I like Ted and New. So I'm still learning a lot of this stuff and I'm not going to sit here and tell you tonight that I have a hundred percent grasp on everything that we're talking about. But I did spend a long time on the wetlands commission. In fact, I'm still on it. And we're very, very hard at setting precedents and trying to be consistent in enforcing those precedents. Okay? So I, I completely understand the importance of that. And if members who have been doing this for quite a while are struggling with the fact that this maybe is not consistent with what they have been trying to do over the last several years. And this is probably not the best idea to pass right now, especially Noah's coming in March. Because you guys did all that with a big picture in mind, an agenda in mind of where you wanted to go with the regulations. And if you think that this kind of is a little premature and may kind of, I don't want to say sabotage is a strong word, but if it's just worth waiting for, then I, I'm willing to defer to the experienced members on this for sure.
Well, it, it certainly does open the door for more conversations at, at this level, right? So voting, voting for this, for instance, would certainly open the door for more applications similar. And then we have to make more and more minute decisions, trying to decide why one application is different than the other. That's, that's seems like the, the argument that Bill and Philip have been raising. And it's something that I typically agree to, to, agree with too. I mean, I, I'm real big on consistency as well. I vote as consistently as possible the whole time that I've been on this commission. And, and I think that also the, the reason why, I think every, it's been hard for us every time we've made a decision on an application like this. And every time, and the reason, and because of that is why we've really made, made sure that, that Glenn added this PRD item into the upcoming zoning regulations so that we just wouldn't have to, it just wouldn't be coming up again. And it would come up as we'd have the tools that we need to be able to approve a specific project for a specific piece and not have to worry about long-term future ramifications. So any other thoughts? Yes, Jason?
Yeah, yeah, on the, what you just mentioned, Scott, I remember when I served prior on planning and zoning before taking the break, that there was that concern about consistency in another application. It didn't have to do with zoning changes, but just things that occurred in town. I don't want to mention specifically. But that was a big area of our discussion is if they were required to do certain things and then we were voting
that they didn't have to do those things. Um, it, that kind of smacked of, 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 of an issue that was concerning. And I know you were concerned about that, that why do we have the regulations? Why do we have the rules? And if we're not going to be consistent with them for everybody?
Correct. And we've been actively trying to identify those places and, and correct them since then, yes. Uh, alright, so it sounds like from my read of the room, would someone like to read a motion, uh, to deny?
Do you need a volunteer or what?
Yes, please. It's not something I can read.
Mr. Chairman, you have read your Robert's rules. Thank you.
Yep.
I, you could put it up on the screen.
He had to put it on the screen. Sure.
I'm sitting in a very dark room right now.
You are in a dark room.
I know you're in a dark room.
You're like a floating head.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Alright, it starts right here.
Proposed motion, Bishop's boundary change, denial with without prejudice.
Thank you. Which basically means they can bring this, this application before us again without significant change.
Correct. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission deny without prejudice a proposed zone boundary change from zone R five to PV two for one, three, five, five Boston Post Road, map fifty-two, lot seven, zone R five. This proposed boundary change is denied based on a finding that without site plan specificity, a zone change to PV's zone will, with all allowable uses, could have potentially adverse impacts on environmentally sensitive areas within the subject partial. Furthermore, the proposed zone boundary change could expand the diversity, A diversity of commercial uses into a residential section of town. And such an expansion of Route One Commercial Corridor is not prioritized in any current town plan.
Second?
Second from Mr. Philip Johnson. Thank you. Alright, another round of discussion. Any last things that folks would want to say?
So I would just ask for, for clarification for anybody. So you guys are all comfortable with the fact that if this waits until March, they can pretty much get what they're asking for?
Uh, I don't, there's any guarantees on March.
No, I, I, no, I understand that. I'm not that, but I'm just seeing.
Well, there, there's no guarantee that it's going to be March. It could be September.
Oh, I know that, but. But the plan is in place to allow applicants to bring an application forward for a zone change associated with a development plan. So the two are tied.
I'm a hundred percent behind what their intention is.
Yeah.
Ten percent. I just think that it needs to be more finely, uh, nuanced and focused at the time it's brought forth and a hundred percent behind it.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I hear you guys. Okay.
Um, alright, well, roll call vote. Uh, so again, this is a motion, so a vote of yes is, uh, yes of denial. Um, Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
No.
Uh, Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Jason Margie?
Yes.
Uh, and I will vote yes. Uh, so that passes by a vote of, uh, six to one. Thank you. We'll move to the next item. I don't have any deliberations. Uh, new applications, John Varva, uh, Vavra, uh, three Bendons Noel Map Eight, Lot twenty-four, three, Zone R five, special permit modification for a ten-foot by thirty-two-foot in-ground swimming pool. Receive and set public hearing for nine, seven, twenty-two. Also, uh, Misra Actar, uh, seventy-two Stepstone Hill Road, map ninety-one, Lot Four, Zone thirty dash C four. Special permit for an after-the-fact seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-square-foot accessory apartment. Receive and set public hearing for nine, seven, twenty-two. And finally, Alexander Ness and Ashley O'Connor, two-seventy, Rachel Road, map one oh-nine, Lot thirty-five, dash A one, Zone R five, special permit for a two, uh, one-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot detached accessory apartment. Receive and set public hearing for nine, twenty-one, twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
To move.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, motion carries. Other commission business, uh, we have a mandatory referral, the, from the Board of Selectmen. Jamie, you want me to read through what's written here or do you want to just summarize?
I think for the record, that would be good. Uh, you're seeing this, I apologize for the third time now, um, just to give you some background and some detail. As the town's, uh, council was negotiating the terms of the deed for this, uh, land dedication that was part of the resubdivision and affordable housing application on Hubbard Road. Uh, we, in consultation with the town engineer, found that the ten-foot wide strip that was requested to extend from the West River and get the public kind of beyond, uh, the guardrail of the West River Bridge and out on the Hubbard Road, uh, was actually of such a steep slope, uh, that it would be more beneficial if we extended that uh, divot strip of land to twenty feet wide. And that was, that was, uh, something that was agreed upon by, uh, all parties. And so that's the distinction. The, the official resubdivision final map, uh, has a different uh, sort of, uh, dedication of land, uh, at that, at that strip. So that's the distinction.
So do we have to accept, uh, by roll call or something like that?
Yeah, so I'll read, I'll read it into the record. The Board of Selectmen, it's at its August first, first, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting, recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission under CGS eight dash twenty-four to accept a certain piece of part of, part of land depicted as, uh, quote, "open space to be conveyed to the town of Guilford," end quote, containing point four plus or minus acres on a map entitled, quote, "resubdivision map land of Hubbard Road LLC, Hubbard Road Parcel B, Town of Guilford, New Haven, Connecticut, County, Connecticut." Uh, "scale," unquote, "scale one to thirty dated ten, six, twenty-one." Uh, revised to six, twenty-eight, twenty-two, and prepared by the LRC Group at one sixty West Street, Site E, uh, Suite E, Crumpel, Connecticut. Said land is located on the Sussex Map, seventy-nine, Lot forty-eight, and is bordered by the West River and Hubbard Road and is on file at the Planning and Zoning Office at fifty Boston Street in Guilford.
It will be your signature on the map, Scott. Remember that.
So do I hear a motion to approve this referral?
To move.
Second.
I heard this.
Aye.
Aye.
From Jason, all in favor?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, second item on the other business is approval of the minutes. Was anyone able to review our minutes from last meeting?
I, I moved that we approved the minutes.
They appear to be substantially correct, in my opinion.
I concur. Second.
Thank you. For the second, all in favor? All opposed? Uh, motion carries. Um, Jamie, do we have any CEO report or anything else to discuss?
Um, no, we don't. Uh, but I would just like to, uh, let you all know that the, uh, Assistant Town Planner slash running important officer physician, uh, that we have been searching for about the last month. The application period ends on Monday, August twenty-second. Today, I've received about fifteen applications. Uh, I feel as though about five of them are, uh, are, are worthy of an interview. Uh, three of them I'm very excited about, so I'm happy to say that.
Excellent. Great.
Yeah. Um, and so I'll be, I'll be reaching out, uh, Scott, I, I would like your representation, uh, on the hiring committee. Uh, I'm also thinking about inviting, uh, Steve Cox, the Chair of the running work appeals. Uh, to sit in on that as well. I'll, I'll repost it, but, uh, in, in general, I'm, I'm pleased with the results.
Terrific.
Great. Jamie, if you're the only one in there, why don't they zoom in on you?
I, you can do that somehow, but I haven't, there's no they. It's just me going over to the wall and getting some guidance.
I thought Peter was with you.
No, we no longer do that. No more videography. Um, you know, I think, I think it's worth, uh, revisiting potentially, uh, this hybrid model. The proof of concept here is that typically I've been here by myself, so. Wanted to throw that out.
Thank you for taking the time away from your family.
Yes, thank you. Uh, alright, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.